For November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. May have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Novotny. Dr. Lemke.
Here.
Mr. Ford. Mr. Fulkerson.
Here.
Mr. Borkowski.
Here.
Mrs. Sands.
Here.
Mrs. Clemmison.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Guess we start with the President's Report. Okay. Tonight, I would like to briefly discuss accountability and how the District Sixty-Seven Board is trying to drive accountability throughout the organization, starting with ourselves. While I was preparing this comment, I asked my daughter what she thought accountability meant, and she said, "Taking ownership of your actions." And she definitely does not always do that herself, but at least she got the definition correct. Webster defines accountability similarly, defining accountability as accepting responsibility for one's actions, including decisions made and assignments completed. As Roger Conners writes in The Oz Principle, "Accountability is fundamental to continued performance improvement. Accountability is the guiding principle that defines how we make commitments to one another, how we measure and report our progress, and how we interact when things go wrong. For accountability to work, expectations must be communicated to the employee who is responsible for the specified action. A common and effective way to do this is through goal-setting. Goal-setting with regular reviews of defined goals is a very effective way to enhance performance at every level of an organization, as clearly-defined goals provide a frame of reference for how a person is performing. Earlier this year, the District Sixty-Seven Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent, defined clear goals for the Superintendent, and these were formally incorporated into his contract at the September Board Meeting. Regular reviews of performance against these goals is already taking place. But true accountability starts by looking in the mirror, not just at others. Over the past month or so, our Board has worked to define our own Board Goals, and we also identified three core values. I'm pleased to share the results of that tonight. First, we've defined three core values. First, our Board will strive to provide student-centric governance. This means keeping the students at the center of every decision we make. This sounds simple, but with many other factors pushing and pulling on us, it can be easy sometimes to actually forget the students. Second, our Board values fiscal responsibility. If students are at the center of every decision we make, the impact on taxpayers is not far behind. We're fortunate to live in a community with abundant resources. Responsible stewardship of those resources is something each of us strongly believes in. And third, we strongly believe in vision-centric leadership, which is another way of saying we want to accelerate the achievement of the district's vision, mission, and milestones. The work done to achieve the milestones is largely operational work, which the Superintendent and his team drives. However, the Board plays an important part in setting priorities and distributing resources, and as such, our decisions can affect the speed at which milestones are achieved. Forgot to click. Our second -- sorry. Now we shift to our four Board Goals that we defined. First, to increase engagement between the community and the school district. Hopefully, members of the community are seeing and feeling this a little bit already, such as our encouragement to attend Board Meetings and to participate in other community meetings. But we have more work to do in this area, and you'll be hearing about it in the future. This also is something that the administration has as a goal. It's just something we all keep in mind. Second Board Goal that we have is to undertake more legislative advocacy and awareness. Our Board recently met to develop an action plan for this, and Beth Clemmison will be sharing more details about that during her report tonight. Third Board Goal we have is to improve the processes for Administrator Compensation and Superintendent Performance Evaluations. Both of these processes are important Board Functions, and members of the Board are already at hard at work improving these processes. Our fourth Board Goal is to begin the development of Board Operating Procedures. This will definitely take more than one year, but formalizing the institutional knowledge and internal processes of the Board will support future Boards in their efforts to quickly become high-performing teams. While these four goals and three core values do not encompass all the work the Board is responsible for, the goals provide insight regarding our priorities and what we hope to accomplish. Hopefully, by sharing these goals publicly, all stakeholders, taxpayers, parents, District employees, and even students, are able to see what the Board's priorities are and what we hope to accomplish. We will be regularly reviewing our own performance against these goals, and we'll hold a formal Board Self-Evaluation at the end of the fiscal year. We welcome all feedback on these goals. That concludes the President's Report, and we now move to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Borkowski. I'd like to update the Board and community on a recent conference that I attended called the Suburban School Superintendents Conference. There's a number of interesting speakers at this conference. The Dean of Freshmen for Harvard University was one of the most intriguing, described a number of things that students that -- in his office, what they're seeing. They are seeing a number of demographic shifts, and the most obvious thing is that they admitted five percent of applicants this past year, and that number continues to decline. To put that in context, eighty years ago, Harvard University admitted seventy-nine percent of all applicants, and it continues to go lower and lower. He observed that parents are omnipresent. It's a big shift from what life used to be like. They're from smaller families. There's extremely high cost of education. There's a lot of technology texting and email back and forth. There is also, he believes, guilt from overworking, from two-parent incomes in particular. Also talked about the generational shifts and the parenting shifts that have occurred from the "go play on your own, raised by wolves" generation of parenting to "we are going to have playdates and to arrange playdates for your kids." And the playdate generation was in part responsible for spawning what became known as helicopter parenting, which has now been replaced by a phenomenon called bulldozer parenting or snowplow parenting, which is, "I will remove every object in my child's way and watch out." And they're dealing with that at the college level, just like schools are nationwide. There is the risk that is that the parents are over-problem solving, doing the problem-solving for their kids. You see kids that are extremely over-programmed. They're very busy. They're always connected. They prepare twenty-nine hours a week. They are in class twelve to sixteen hours a week. They do ten hours of extracurricular activity, and they take what are known as power naps instead of sleeping. Students are coming with more and more mental health issues, which they connect back to the parents doing their -- the students' problem-solving for them in part. Many students, thirteen percent, report depression, another thirteen percent anxiety, another eleven percent panic attacks, and three percent have suicidal thoughts. Some of those things are intermingled, of course. One of the things that they see also is drug and alcohol, where they have only forty percent of their incoming students have -- or forty percent of their incoming students are non-drinkers, and many more of them leave drinkers than non-drinkers. It's a phenomenon that they see. Seventy-six percent of them had no experience with marijuana when they arrived, and a big shift in that by the time they leave also. One of the most significant things in the Boston area in particular is sexual assault. One of the things that is both good and sad about this is that a generation ago, we didn't talk about these things. And now, it's very nice to hear them talk openly about the phenomenon of sexual assault in their city and also on their campus. Thirty-one percent of students polled, sixty percent of the eligible responders did, in fact, respond to this. We had a large sample. Thirty-one percent had non-consensual contact, and then forty-four percent had witnessed a drunk person headed off to a sexual encounter, and seventy-seven percent of those did nothing about it. And this is a trend that I think we'll see in our schools, and we'll also see it in our society, talking about the responsibility to do something when you see something bad about to happen. And the recent events in Paris is one of the examples of that as well. They see students that are extraordinarily risk averse. They feel the burden of the expectations on them. They are preparing for grad school and job prospects, and a generation ago, they're preparing themselves for, "Who do I want to be as a person? What do I want to be when I grow up in terms of what kind of life do I want to have?" A lot of resume building. So forty-seven percent versus seventy-five percent are -- so, a number of years ago, they looked at and they said seventy-five percent of our kids were interested in developing a life philosophy, and now forty-seven percent of them are. Another really interesting part of the conference that I thought was going to be really bad, but wound up being really good, was an examination of Mount Everest and using that as a learning tool for leadership. And the different -- two people from the School of Education came in and talked to us, and they talked about a variety of different types of bias, cognitive bias, sunk-cost bias, that, hey, you know, we have spent so much time and so much effort. In the case of Everest, they spent seventy thousand dollars each getting to base camp and getting most of the way up the mountain. We can't go back now. Overconfidence bias, also the recency effect of, "We just got to the -- the last group got up. Now this group can get up." What happens because of that? It worked last time. And then different parts of what broke down in the course of the climb to the top. The differences in member status, the leader coaching and support, the level of familiarity and prior interaction among group members, which leads to team psychological safety, which then leads to team learning behavior, and the necessity of developing high levels of shared understanding before you go up. So, for example, is the goal of the group to get to the summit, or is the goal of the group to get to the summit and back? And that changes. So, one of the things they say is, "Above twenty-six thousand feet, mountain madness takes over, and reason leaves you." So, the need to have these practices in place is really wound up being very good. The people that led it were remarkably, remarkably good at facilitating a conversation. I also want to show you a mind-blowing thing that the professor from MIT -- actually, I don't have a presentation. I'm going to go and show you on the Internet over here. So, this is a trend in education and something that is very new, started by an MIT professor. It's known as EdX. And there have been a number of different attempts to make this type of learning work. EdX is, they use MOOCs, which are massive, open, online courses, also known as Coursera, and there have been a number of different iterations of this. The thing that is most interesting about this particular group, first, they're a nonprofit, and second, they recognize that a standalone course will be finished by virtually no one. So, between three and five percent of people that begin a MOOC, which is a Harvard, an MIT, a Stanford, University of Michigan course, the greatest instructors of the world are videotaped, and there's a course sequence that you can follow through. Very, very few people use those. These courses, interestingly, twenty-five percent of the users are teachers, and they're teachers that want to have an experience with a class that they are about to teach and become more familiar with the coursework. So, down at the bottom, you can see some of the participating schools that they have, and then some of the courses. Test Preparation is one. Introduction to Java. Statistical Thinking for Data Science and Linux. I know you're excited already. Analyzing and Visualizing Data with Excel. And there are all sorts of different things you can take. So, let me show you a little bit how it works. So, you can take a high school class, or you can earn university credit. This is one of the real differences. So, they are now offering courses that you can get college credit from Arizona State University if you take these. So, what they're saying is, for about five thousand dollars, you can have your freshman year. How many students participate in that? I don't know. What led, in part, to this, again, it's a MIT professor, and he's the CEO of this organization, what led to this, was a survey of all MIT alumni, saying, "What should we do in the future? What should be our focus?" And the alumni came back with one very clear charge: Find a way to democratize education, higher education, to make it affordable and accessible to everyone in the world. And so, they've really been pursuing that. So, some of the courses that you can take. Everything from architecture to social science. You can click on here. You can sign up for these at any time. And so, down the right-hand side, you can see what is currently available, which you're starting soon, which are upcoming, which are archived. A great many are archived, and you can see in the various subject areas. So, art and culture. You can take fifty-five different classes in art and culture. Everything from visualizing Japan to the First Knight's Handel's Messiah and Baroque Oratorio, to the art of structural engineering and bridges, to the ancient Greek hero in Twenty-Four Hours. So, all sorts of different things. So, these things, they're one iteration after the next, after the next, and each is better than the last. One of the things that is of interest for us in this, we are headed towards more and more individualization, personalization for our kids all the way through our -- all the way through their school experience in elementary and middle school, and also in high school. Student voice and student choice. At later levels, one of the things that this can do for students is provide them and their teacher a guide for, for example, an independent study. Our teachers work very hard sometimes, so a kid doesn't have to create entirely their own independent study. They might be able to go on and find one that is really interesting. But they touch base three, four times a week with the teacher that knows them and then is familiar with the material. Really a compelling possible opportunity for us. And if nothing else, a vision into the next really interesting, challenging step forward into changing the accessibility of quality education for everybody across the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the Superintendent? Seeing none, we now move to public participation. The Board of Education welcomes public attendance and participation at all of our meetings. If any member of the public would like to address the Board, they should come to the microphone, state their name and address. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we move on to reports, which I believe we have no reports tonight. Is that right? Fantastic. Now, move on to Board Committees. Our first Board Committee is the Board of Education Committee, headed by Beth Clemmison.
The Education Committee has not met since our last Board Meeting. However, we do have a meeting tomorrow morning, bright and early, eight fifteen, right here at West Campus.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions for the Education Committee? Seeing none, we move to the Board Finance and Operations Committee, headed by Rob Lemke.
Thanks, Mike. As always, there's a report online that the public and the Board members are encouraged to read. So, the meeting of Finance and Operations for November tenth began at eight AM with the three Board Members and the four community members present, along with Ellen and Brittany and Jen and Mike Simic. In response to our discussion at our last meeting, Brittany and Jen provided a recommendation on student fees for 2016-17. We continue to work on updating our fee philosophy. When that work is complete, we will post the philosophy to the website, we expect. We expect the Board will vote on student fees for the 16-17 academic year at the December meeting. The registration and fee collection process next year will also include a greater description of what student fees go toward. We anticipate the grade-level technology consumable fees to remain roughly fixed for kindergarten through the fourth grade and to increase slightly in grades five through eight to partially offset some of the fees that will no longer be charged. Overall, however, we expect the district to receive slightly less revenue in fees next year than it did this year on a per-pupil basis. Regarding field trip fees, the administration was not in a position quite yet to where they could give a formal recommendation, but we do expect to receive a recommendation from them in the near future. Then Ellen reviewed the tax levy with the committee, and -- which he will talk to us later, so I won't review that here. In a nutshell, however, the administration is proposing, with unanimous support from the Finance and Operations Committee, that we adopt a tax levy that increases local tax revenue by about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will allow us to fully capture any new construction. At this amount, we anticipate the tax rate will actually fall slightly as housing values have outpaced CPI. And lastly, Carol White shared with the committee that the painting projects at Sheridan and Cherokee that were delayed last summer will not be completed over spring or winter breaks, as there simply isn't enough time for either project. As the money has already been budgeted, however, the suggestion was made for the district to engage in projects that are currently scheduled for 16-17 and to simply swap projects across the two fiscal years, essentially keeping the budgets unchanged. Most of the projects that will now be done in the current fiscal year are life maintenance, plumbing, and kitchen projects. The committee will next meet on January nineteenth at eight AM at West Campus to primarily discuss the audit and receive an update on the five-year budget projection. The meeting adjourned before nine o'clock.
Thank you, Rob. Any comments or questions for the Finance Committee? Seeing none, we move on to the Policy Committee, headed by Jeff Fulkerson.
The Policy Committee did not meet since our last Board Meeting. However, we do have a joint policy meeting scheduled for December seventh at eight fifteen AM to discuss the most recent press release of Ninety and Other Atomics.
Thank you, Jeff. We move on to the Compensation Committee, headed by Tom Ford.
Thank you, Mike. The Compensation Committee met on Monday, October twenty-sixth, at six forty-five at the District Offices. Tom Ford chaired the meeting with Committee Members Rob Lemke and Mark Borkowski in attendance. Also Superintendent Mike Simic and District One Fifteen School Board Members Reese Markison and John Powers were also in attendance. The purpose of the meeting was to continue to improve the process on how to best determine staff and administrative comp in relation to District Sixty-Seven. Our intent on having the Board Members from District One Fifteen to the meeting was to see if they would be interested in collaborating on this effort, since we have several employees that we share under the Joint Services Agreement, and because we believe it makes sense to have a joint process for reviewing this area as the two districts are intertwined so closely. Based on the meeting results, we have agreed to try to formulate a process that both districts can use going forward. There was a great deal of information shared at the meeting, including important feedback from many school districts in our area that we deem as peers, as well as the City of Lake Forest, as to how they handle their individual compensation reviews for staff and administration. We heard a variety of different ways that this process occurred, with many of these districts tying the reviews to the current contract of the teachers of each respective district. After hearing the ways other districts worked on the process, we discussed our views and came up with a general framework to work off for our next meeting. These concepts generally addressed the process where the Board would have more initial input into the process. We believe by assisting the Superintendent in his review and providing him in advance with more guidance into what kind of budget and expectations are in this process, we could make this important task easier and more efficient. We are going to take these base ideas on the process and examine them in detail at our next meeting that is scheduled for Monday, November thirty, at six forty-five PM here at the District Offices. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions or comments for Tom or the Compensation Committee? Seeing none, we move to the Joint Shared Services Committee, which has not met since our last Board Meeting. Move to Liaison Reports. The first being North Shore Special Ed District, NSSCD Suzanne.
NSSCD has not met since our last meeting. I'm going to a meeting tomorrow night at seven o'clock.
Comment was, "Have fun."
Yes. I will call you at eleven when I'm finished.
Seeing no further NSSCD comments, we move to Legislative Liaison. Beth.
Thank you. The Board held a joint workshop with District One Fifteen last Thursday, November twelfth, at seven PM. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the Board's role in monitoring and addressing potential changes in legislation at both the federal and the state level. As background, the Board of Education has typically taken a predominantly passive role in this process and has relied heavily on the administration to keep us abreast of impending changes. However, at the urging of the Superintendent, both Boards examined options for potentially taking a more active position. After discussing recent developments and legislation jointly, each Board separately discussed what their respective legislative strategy should be and brainstormed potential tactics. Overall, District Sixty-Seven determined strategically that it was important to master the basics before embarking on a complex, multi-dimensional approach, meaning we want to walk before we run. Further, it was deemed most critical and likely most impactful to work to affect policy at the state versus the federal level. From there, we brainstormed many potential ideas and settled on approximately six tactics where we felt that were worth pursuing this school year. They included working collectively as a board and administration to stay more informed on the issues, working more proactively with our elected officials, and developing and sharing position papers and/or resolutions on key legislation. We shared our plans with District One Fifteen and agreed to work collaboratively as appropriate. Following our meeting the next day on Friday, it was announced that Congress reached a tentative agreement on a replacement for No Child Left Behind. As previously reported, this summer, both the Senate and the House passed legislation that would revise the No Child Left Behind law. It was felt that finding common ground across these two bills could prove to be very difficult. However, reports on Friday said this new deal largely follows the Senate bill, which had strong bipartisan support, with a few key components from the House bill. Key aspects of the new bill include, first, that the states, not the federal government, would set educational goals and policies. However, the Department of Education would still approve these plans. There is still a federal requirement that states would need to test all students in math and reading each year in grades three through eight and once in high school. States would be required to intervene in schools where students are in the lowest five percent and/or where less than sixty-seven percent of students graduate on time. But the states would be the ones who would determine what actions to take in these situations. For schools not struggling, the states would decide how to measure yearly progress, how to weight test scores, and whether or not to use those scores to evaluate teachers. Overall, the deal is seen as significantly reducing the Department of Education's authority by prohibiting the department from setting standards and assessments, requiring teacher evaluations, or using grant programs to influence state education policies, which was a key component of the House bill. The bill is expected to come to a vote in the House and the Senate after Thanksgiving. If approved, the state waivers granted by the Obama Administration in exchange for policy support will disappear. So, we will obviously be staying close to this in the coming month.
Thank you, Beth. Comments or questions for Beth? Seeing none, we move on to the Spirit of Sixty-Seven Foundation. Suzanne.
The Spirit of Sixty-Seven Foundation Board last met on November tenth, two thousand and fifteen, in this room. As far as fundraising goes at this point, this year's fall fundraising events, which were an online auction and the Barn Dance Benefit, raised almost forty-seven thousand dollars that can be used to fund grants. The events were budgeted to raise forty, so it was a great success. Grant applications are now available, I would say, on the website, but the website was shut down today due to hacking. So, will be available again on the website. If you would like an application for a grant, you can contact Kathy Ivan-Jack, and she will be happy to send you one. And the grant applications are due, she's the VP of Grants, January twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, at noon. All students, teachers, and parents with big ideas are encouraged to apply. The Visiting Author Program, funded by the Spirit of Sixty-Seven and organized by the APT, happened in October. Barb Rosenstock visited all of our elementary schools and spent the day doing large -- spent her time doing large and small group presentations. We also had, at our last meeting, a presentation on Read and Write for Google, which is one of the grants that is being funded this year. And now, all students in -- And now, all students in grades two through eight have access to Read and Write for Google through their Google accounts. If you don't know what it is, it's an amazing piece of software. It's a bunch of, a collection of tools that give students support when they're doing reading and writing, when they're using PDFs or using the Internet. There are tools that can reduce the reading level of some of the content for them automatically, can help with highlighting what the key parts are to something, can feed words based on what you're already typing, it can suggest to you what word might be coming next to move your writing process along. There's a translating tool that can translate, I believe, to French and Spanish. But one of the reasons that we invited someone to come and present at the Spirit Board meeting was that we wanted people to know that this is available to our kids and they can use it at home as well as at school. So it is available for all students. It is very helpful for students who have identified needs to have these tools available to them in school, but especially for kids who may not have identified needs, this is a helpful tool when they're struggling with something related to reading and writing. There are many YouTube videos that sort of give you an overview of this software and tool, and I would encourage you, if you're interested, if anything that I've said sparks your interest, take a look. The next meeting of the spirit will be on December 8th here at 9:00 AM.
Thank you, Suzanne. Questions or comments for Suzanne related to the Spirit of 67? Move on to the APT, Jeff.
The District 67 APT Exec Board met back on Wednesday, November 11th here in the West Campus. Some of the highlights included, for the APT this year, online registration has proven to be a huge benefit. Not only have membership rates increased, but obviously fee collection has been made much simpler and in advance, so that's been great. One of the unintended consequences, however, is for some families, as they were moving through the process, they accidentally double-paid their APT membership if they had multiple kids in the district. The good news is it was only less than 10% of APT members, and the Exec Board is in the process of refunding everyone's money. Unfortunately, we aren't going to be able to do that through InfoSnap, so it's going to have to be done manually. So for those families that did unfortunately double-pay their membership, they'll be getting a check in the mail over the next week or so. The Exec Committee is always looking for pictures, so if folks have pictures of APT-sponsored events like Visiting Author or some of the school events, Halloween parties and so forth, they are encouraged to provide those to Connie Hollingsworth, who will put them on the APT website. Nomination forms for the four APT Exec Board positions that are going to be available for the 2015 through 17 school years will be coming out at the end of this month, and the nominations committee will kick off their process in early January. And as a reminder, the four positions that are going to be up for being filled for those school years are the Executive Board Vice President, the Board Recording Secretary, Cherokee President, and Sheridan President. So if anyone is interested in applying for one of those positions, look for a nominations form at the end of the month. All of the Halloween parties were a huge success, even with an unplanned visit at Sheridan School from the Fire Department. A fog machine got a little crazy in a very confined space, so unfortunately, the Fire Department showed up, but everything went well. And speaking of Sheridan, this past week, they've implemented a really neat idea called a house system, similar to what you would see, that's not one of them, but similar to Hogwarts style. There are going to be four houses within the school, and each house will incorporate kids from grades four all the way through first grade. And the idea there is a way to give some of the younger kids some mentors with the older kids and give the older kids a chance to actually do the mentoring with the younger kids, and just look at creating a community, a school community, in a slightly different way. The plan is to use this for things like the HUGS food drive. Instead of having classes, you know, compete against each other and so forth, each house would plan how they would work towards accumulating the product that they would need for the HUGS food drive, and all the other projects throughout the year that they will utilize this system. And I thought one of the things that was kind of cool is they are the Sheridan Sharks, so each of the houses has a shark theme to it. So there's the Hammerheads, the Tigers, the Reef Sharks, and the Black Tip Sharks. Those are the four houses. I thought it was pretty neat. From a Deer Path Middle School perspective, hopefully, people have read in the press about the Community Service Day that was held back on October 27th, with eighth graders going around the community as well as throughout Lake County, to 15 different organizations and locations to volunteer their time and put in some community service hours, which they are asked to do for graduation. So, great work for the eighth grade, and thanks to the committee, the APT committee, that helped plan that. As Suzanne mentioned, we had a Visiting Author back in October, Barbara Rosenstock, who did a wonderful job of visiting the three elementary schools. She personalized over 315 books. And one of the comments that came back was it wasn't just a, you know, congratulations or best of luck or, you know, she took the time to truly personalize and write a note to everybody who asked for a book. So, thanks to her for that. And also, special thanks go out to all the art teachers in the buildings. Each of the art teachers in every building, the elementary buildings, put together a special exhibit in the main entryway for her visit, and she was extremely touched by that and very excited. So, thanks to the art teachers for doing a wonderful job. Lastly, the Parent Awareness and Emotional Wellness Committees are combining to start publishing a quarterly e-newsletter that will be called E-Pulse, with the idea to better share information on emotional wellness topics throughout the district. The Exec Board will not meet in December, our next meeting will be in January of 2016, believe it or not. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions for Jeff on APT items? Seeing none, we move to action items. Just a reminder, as we've done in past months, we're trying to follow Robert Rules of Order a little closer. For each action item, we'll ask for a motion and a second, and then move to discussion prior to a vote. Our first action item is the approval of the tentative levy. Is there a motion to approve the tentative levy?
So moved.
Is there a second? Great. With that, we move to discussion. I think Alan is going to lead our discussion on this item.
Thank you. If you were to look at a pie chart of expenditures of school districts around the state, you would see a lot of similarity in how districts spend money. We're labor-intensive industries, so salary and benefits tend to be consistent throughout districts. But if you were to look on the revenue side and look at a pie chart, you would see a lot of variation as you go throughout the state. In our district, because of the property values on the North Shore, we're very reliant on local property taxes, and there's good and bad with that. But if you were to go to other parts of the state, this pie would look very different with the state's share becoming much bigger and the local and property tax section becoming much smaller. Since 1991, though, our largest revenue source, which are property taxes, have been capped by the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act. And over that period of time, this shows the annual change from year to year in the aggregate increase that can occur in property taxes. So over the last three years, you'll see that that number has been less than 2%. Now, as an individual, you may say, "Well, that's not making sense to me, because my property tax bill last year went up 6%." And you've got to keep in mind, this is in the aggregate. So if we add up all the properties in the school district, it only goes up by this amount. Individually, you can be higher or lower depending on how your property increases or decreases in relation to other properties. As enrollment has declined, I've been asked why, if we have fewer students, do we need any increase at all? And first and foremost, I would say that the decline in enrollment, the stability of property tax revenue, and budget adjustments helped us navigate through the worst economic period in this country since the Depression. In addition, though, I think we have to recognize that many of the components that comprise our budget tend to act independent of one another. So property taxes are a component of the budget. Other revenue sources are as well, but so are our staffing levels, our salaries, our benefits, utilities, equipment, capital projects, individual student needs like private placement tuition, legal expenses, supplies, technology and technology infrastructure. So to oversimplify it, just because enrollment declines doesn't mean our utility costs are going to go down. They operate very independently. But I'd like to drill down on a couple other components to help illustrate that. This chart shows other major revenue sources in the school district, and in every one of these categories, this is interest earnings on this line here, and every other one are state revenues. Every component here is less in 2014 than it was in 2007. So the stability of property taxes, including the inflationary adjustment, has helped us mitigate some of the stagnation or deflation that has occurred in other revenue sources. And the one that's most dramatic is this one, in the interest earnings. So in 2007, can't tell, is that going up in increments of $100,000?
Yes.
Okay, so we were at about $750,000, and now we're below $100,000 in annual earnings. But it's not just here. One of the components I mentioned was technology, and I always like using this example. If you go back six years, none of us knew what tablet computing was. So I think the iPad came out in April of 2010. Okay? So what does that mean to us, though? I mean, now tablet computing is ubiquitous. So for a school district, though, what does that mean? It means we've had to integrate that into instruction, which means professional development for teachers and research. It means acquiring hardware for staff members. It means building an infrastructure to support all of these new devices coming into the schools. It means personnel to support students and teachers with that. So again, that has operated completely void of our enrollment decline and inflation for that matter. Last one I'd point out would be capital projects. Over the last several years, we've begun the first major facility renovations since Project 2000. In fact, in this year's budget, I think we have about $800,000 that we earmarked to replace carpet and tile at two of our schools that contain asbestos. We'll be doing some more of that work next year, and we have other life safety and other capital projects over the next few years. So in very broad strokes, and I realize I'm oversimplifying this, but we've used the decline in enrollment, the stability of property taxes, to help navigate through the recession, to implement technology, and to keep our facilities up to date. And I think that's good planning, because we don't know what the future will bring. Today, we had a conversation with some board members in another district that are going through enrollment increases, and they're struggling with how they deal with that. We're trying to position ourselves so if that happens in two years, we don't have to also compete with facilities, because we've addressed those, that we are current on technology. So we're trying to use the existing revenue stream to manage and position ourselves for an unknown future. Now I think that strategy works so long as the tax burden does not push people out to other communities. So I know this is way too detailed to see and make any sense out of it, but I'll describe it. We ran a comparative analytic of all the Coller Counties' elementary school district tax rates. Can't fit them all on here, so you have to trust me a little bit in what I say. Lake Forest 67 is right here. So I looked through all the Coller Counties, the only school district that I found lower was this one over here, which is Butler Elementary. If you're not familiar with Butler, Butler is a very small school district, very few students in the Oak Brook area, and part of its tax base is the Oak Brook Shopping Center. To bring this home even more, though, I think this slide is really telling. And Jeff, as a Realtor, I know this has resonated with Realtors in the past. If you take our tax rate and you take a million-dollar house, and you take a third of that, that's considered basically the equalized assessed value, the property taxes paid to our district in 2014 were $4,810. If you take that house and move it over to Deerfield, same house, and apply their tax rate, the taxes paid to the elementary school district in Deerfield are $11,268, or a 134% increase over the taxes paid in Lake Forest. And you can go across the board. In every case, they're double, with the exception of Lake Bluff, which is almost double. This is also true at the high school level. In fact, something to shoot for, the high school district had the lowest tax rate in all of the Coller County areas. So as we look to this levy, the county will provide us with projections on new construction and changes in tax base, and the change in the tax base really just affects the rate at this point, does not really affect the dollars we're going to get with the way the formula works. But using the county numbers, we anticipate an increase in revenue from existing property of a little less than a quarter million dollars. That is about a third of the historic average, because the CPI for this tax levy is 8 tenths of 1%. New construction will provide about $76,000 for a total increase of 325. Now, because this number, the new construction figure that drives this figure, is an estimate, we typically will ask for more than what we think we're going to get, for two reasons. One is we want to capture all that new construction dollars. And secondly, as we go to prepare the budget, it gives us a little more latitude with where we place dollars among funds. So Mr. Lemke talked earlier about the fact that we would be recommending a levy that was up about $550,000, and that's what you see down here. Okay? So again, though, even though we ask for that, if the formula will not allow that, we get knocked back down to what the formula allows. So we could ask for a couple hundred thousand more or a couple million more, it really won't matter. This levy will fund the 2016-2017 school year, so to talk about some of the instructional things that this revenue will be used for is Mr. Rogers.
Beginning with our strategic plan, District 67 has set forth on an ambitious and forward-thinking path to ensure that Lake Forest District 67 is nationally recognized for achieving significant academic, social, emotional growth for every student. In this spirit, we are implementing new initiatives with fidelity. We've been very ambitious in terms of the things we're trying to accomplish. Writing Workshop, I had the good experience today of being in a fourth-grade lesson study at Sheridan School, where we had our class of students and also a class of teachers working side by side with a mentor and also with Susan Millsk, our learning specialist. We have a connected math program, where students are learning math through a new set of standards and new lens, backed by National Council Teachers in Mathematics. We have inquiry-based units. Our Inspiration Block is evolving. Next month, we'll hear an update to the Inspiration Block. Our team's continuing to work on that, continuing to innovate. We have ELO. Our students this fall had wonderful experiences across the board and extended learning opportunities. 2016, we embark on Reading Workshop, and so we're very excited about that as we move And last, but certainly not least, developing documented, informative, and summative assessments. As many people know, the summative and informative assessments are the things that, in effect, the tail that wags the dog in schools. And so if we're developing assessments that really require students to think critically, that require them to use their current knowledge and extend that in new and novel ways, is what we want to position them for success in college and career. The environment. Talk about reimagined learning spaces, places, times, tools, and technologies inside and outside of the classroom. We're seeing great things that have happened over the past couple of years. We now have our STEM labs online, very exciting to see our kids actually choosing the actual science projects they want to do moving forward. We actually also have a big project underway looking at Haskins, and how can we develop another 21st-century state-of-the-art space? We had the Cube, and we know the great success the Cube has. What is the next step for Lake Forest schools? In that also, we want to make sure that we're able to support inquiry. So inquiry obviously can happen in many different places, but are we creating the environment? But are we creating the environment, providing the resources, the technology, so students can actually have those experiences? We're ensuring our students have access to current technologies in a rapidly evolving world. Mr. Albus pointed out the iPad in 2010, right? And so we know things are evolving rapidly. Some people are saying the laptop, you may have heard, is no longer important, right? So we have our major CEOs talking about that, tech leaders. We actually had last month a visit from Google Expeditions. The technology is evolving so rapidly. We want to make sure that our students have access to cutting-edge, state-of-the-art technologies as they move forward. Also importantly is that our teachers have that type of experience where they're learning about the technology. And also that that exposure is job embedded, that they can have that on-the-job, learning alongside. And sometimes, in our world, that means they're going to be learning alongside of our students. But that's what it's going to take to keep pace with our rapidly evolving world. And then STEAM experiences. And so we have a whole set of next-generation science standards. And when we look at what's going to be important for positioning our students for the future, it's students that can create using engineering, arts. The types of activities which are easily replicable will actually be automated and will become non-jobs, in essence. And so how are we creating those STEAM experiences for our students? And so what we'd like to be able to do in Lake Forest is have those experiences available to our students. Things you'd see, for instance, at Sheridan, when we have their lightbulb labs. Those things continue into, I guess, modified ELO experiences, so on and so forth. But they become also embedded in all of the classes. And then culminating in great experiences at the high school level with things like maker spaces, engineering labs, art classes which utilize all the latest technologies as well. Okay, so that being said, again, I think the work done with the tax levy helps us sustain and also to help evolve our current programs. Thank you.
Okay, so four takeaways that we'd like you to think about. Since 1991, property taxes are increasing at the rate of inflation. And for the 2015 year, that's eight tenths of 1%. The district has and will likely continue to have the second-lowest elementary tax rate in all of the collar counties. The recommended levy is slightly higher than what we anticipate to ensure that we capture all new construction and that this levy will fund the 1617 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan and Barry. And I appreciate the focus on the education side, that it's the reason we ask for tax dollars is not simply to pay utility bills and open buildings, but rather to educate and continue to accelerate towards our vision and mission. Questions, comments, board members for Alan and/or Barry, or anyone else? Jeff?
Yeah, a quick question. Alan, is it fair to say that not only is our tax, elementary school tax rate, in terms of dollars, one of the lowest, but those dollars in relation to the overall tax bill, as a percentage of the tax bill, is also one of the lowest?
We looked at this a couple of years ago. I would be really surprised if it had changed. But in Lake County, the average school district portion of a tax bill was 66%. In Lake Forest, it was 50%. If you were in Lake Bluff Elementary and Lake Forest High School, it was 60. So it was still lower. But yes, throughout, my experience throughout the collar counties, that is a very low percentage of the tax bill.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Aye.
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 Thank you. Thanks again, Alan and Barry, for that. Our next action item is approval of Policy 640, Curriculum Development, Second Reading. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, explanation? Jeff?
If you recall from last month, Policy 640 deals with curriculum development and has been amended to better clarify the board's role when it comes to approving curriculum.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
So I'm going to apologize to Jeff and to the fellow board members. I probably should have spoken up last time, or in the intervening month. But I have a hard, I'm actually having a hard time with this. Last month, I had a hard time using a word like "major." And I know Jeff or Barry talked to it, saying they couldn't come up with something better or something like that. And I also misread it last month. I thought last month it said, if it was major, or if it was multi-grade level or across buildings, then something would happen. And it actually doesn't say that. It says, if it's major and it's multi-building, and this and that. And so I'm actually disposed to vote against this, just because I wish there was more clarity here. Further on in the policy, we do talk about what would be a major pilot program by putting a dollar amount to it. And so this didn't sit well with me. I definitely appreciate the work the committee has done. And I understand that you don't want to be a dictionary, but it does bother me a little.
Can I point out that it does not say "and," it says "and/or"? I'm looking at it. The superintendent shall bring to the board for approval.
The "and/or" is between the kinds. So it says, major material adoptions and/or major instructional program changes. And then the clause is following "that." "That do something else." That's the, so...
What's the... I don't think I understand what you're...
So in order for this to kick in, you need to have a major materials adoption or a major instructional program. "That" actually is across buildings or across grade levels. So if they have a major thing that's only in the eighth grade, they wouldn't have to come here. They wouldn't have to come to the board. They could do whatever they want in the eighth grade. It doesn't go across buildings. It doesn't go across grade levels.
That was, the reason for the term "major" was to be used at the discretion of the administration and be at the Education Committee or whomever is being apprised of the proposed changes to make that call relative to whether this is something that should come before the board or not. The concern that the Policy Committee had was by trying to define it too narrowly, you either create a situation where you're reporting, you're asking for approval of everything, or it then becomes very difficult to understand what we should or shouldn't do through the committee process. So the intent here is to, if we're following the current process, which is curriculum changes go before the Education Committee for some level of vetting and feedback. If the Education Committee would feel that this is a major curriculum change or a major material adoption, then they would recommend it come before the board for a vote. But it, we did not want to specifically put verbiage in the policy that mandated everything coming before the board for a vote.
I completely understand. And I would actually say what you just said would be a nice change. If it would have said, "Any major, any major thing as determined by the Education Committee," then I would have no problem with this. But as it reads, I believe this is determined by anyone who wants to determine it this way, including, especially the superintendent or some administrator.
One of the things that we were also discussing, and the reason that we put in the multiple grade levels or buildings, is because we honestly couldn't come up with an example of a change that didn't hit all those marks that we would want to come before us. So I understand what you're saying, and what if they make a change in eighth grade? So give us an example of what change would be made at eighth grade that would only be made at eighth grade that we would want to be involved with.
I don't know.
So as we reviewed, as we went back...
But I don't know what's coming down...
Right, we don't know. I agree with you, Rob. As we went back and looked at the major decisions that have happened over the past memorable amount of years, every one of the ones that we had a discussion of, shouldn't this have come through the board, fit this criteria, which is sort of where we got comfortable with this. But I can hear what you're saying as well.
The other aspect was trying to draw some level of definition as to what level of detail the board should be engaged in. This verbiage seemed, I won't say it's the best we could come up with, but we did discuss this quite a bit in trying to find a way of articulating a desire to be involved at some level, but not down to a level of minutia where, you know, you want to change the book reading list at a particular grade level. Does the board need to approve that? I mean, no, of course not. So I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, we were very diligent and careful to try and provide enough structure that there was a call for action when necessary, but not so much that we put undue burden on the administration as well as ourselves for approving everything.
So let me try and ask a question and see if it would fall into "major." Because I was trying to take Rob's challenge and think of an example. Currently, in eighth grade, we have a collection of students who go to the high school to take a math class. This is a program we've done for quite some time. If it was decided that those eighth graders would no longer be able to do this program, would that be, where would that fall in that? Is that something that the board would get involved in or not get involved in? One might consider it major, but it's only one grade level. So I guess I'm sort of seeing that there could be some gray areas.
I don't want to speak for the board. For me personally, no, I don't believe the board needs to vote on that. At some level, that's what we've hired the administration to make that educated and insightful decision. And if they believe that's in the best interest of the students that are in that program at that level, for that number of kids engaged or involved in the decision, no, I don't think the board needs to be approving that.
My only point, and then I won't say anything else, is I trust the Board of Education Committee to make those decisions. That's why I'm not on that board. I'm not on that committee. I don't like that this, that this doesn't give them the express right to define "major." It doesn't. It gives the administration the express right to define "major." And I think Beth raises, I wish I was as quick as Beth, because I think that's a really good example. So everyone sees what it is, and we should move on, and we should vote.
Well, okay, I don't disagree. I'm not sure that any of these things give the committees the express right to define... I don't want to say it's inherent. I mean, maybe we've made too much of an assumption. If your point is, it's assumed too broadly in the policy, how it's currently worded, that we would follow the normal practice that we've always been following, and we need to be more articulate in outlining that, okay, that's fair. But in the end, none of the committees can actually decide anything. So it's merely a vetting process, which is, we trust the administration to bring large and small changes to the curriculum in front of the various committees, or in this case, the Education Committee, to provide feedback and do a level of vetting. That's the purpose of the committee. So I personally don't know that it's necessary. I understand what you're saying, but I think, I don't think it's necessary.
I would push back on the committee piece only because I don't think that our committees are empowered to approve anything. So I don't think that we can ask our committees to be in the position to make those approvals. I agree with you that I think that they have a role in making recommendations. So when you came forward today and said that there was support from the Finance Committee for the tax levy, that carries a lot of weight with me. But you didn't say that you guys approved it for us to approve it. And I think that that's one of the things that we could get ourselves into trouble by writing into policy that it has to go through an approval process through the Ed Committee. That is a sticky wicket for me.
You're absolutely right on that. So I might have misspoke. The point is, committee chairs do have some power to dictate what appears in budgets and what comes to meetings. So you're right that if we would change it to say, according to the Education Committee, there would be the issue that maybe the administration doesn't even bring it to the Education Committee. I think that just actually causes more concern rather than less concern.
I think too, in terms of putting a dollar amount on it, we talked about putting a dollar amount on it, but then you sort of get into that same place where there are some things where the dollar amount is lower than you might anticipate. And you do want to have a say, because it does impact a lot of grades or it does impact a significant portion of the curriculum. But the dollar amount doesn't bring the flag up. And then you've missed an opportunity that, under this language, the, a person would know that they needed to bring it to us.
And I believe it's still written in policy that any contract written for at least $25,000 or more requires board approval. So if there were a major materials adoption, and if it were, it's in another policy. It's not buried in here. We buried it under the pilot program one, didn't really need to. But we did explicitly say it. So it is in other policy that any contract written for more than $25,000, the board has to vote to approve, so. Call the question.
Can you, can you walk me through, I guess, two recent things? Math materials and world language. How would they have played out under this policy?
They both have to come to us.
As they both did.
But those were two that we talked about. And they both have to come to us for multiple grade levels. Nothing was being done for one grade level. So already, they hit the lipna test, and they're major. I mean, they were major overhauls of those curricular areas. And there's no, you could not argue that they were not either of those things.
Any other questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please? Aileen?
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmerson?
Yeah, I think I'm going to go with nay. I think Rob convinced me.
Mr. Novit? Dr. Lemke?
Nay.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I just want to thank the board for that discussion and point out that that is a good use of a first and second reading, in my opinion. I think that was good conversation. Moving on, our next action item is the approval of Policy 130, School District Organization, Second Reading. Is there a motion to approve that policy?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Kent. Jeff, you want to lead our discussion on Policy 130, School District Organization, Second Reading?
Yes, Policy 130, School District Organization, School District Philosophy, was a rewrite where we essentially just repopulated the policy with current verbiage and district mission, vision, and core values. Since the old policy was written five-plus years prior, it did not represent the current thinking of the district. So all we've done is repopulated the policy with the current district information.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Seeing that Mr. Lemke has nothing to say, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Novit? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of Policy 610, Educational Philosophy and Objectives, Second Reading. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion led by Jeff?
Similar to Policy 130, Policy 610 is essentially repopulating that particular policy regarding educational philosophy and objectives with the district's current objectives that came out of the mission and vision process.
Questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Clemmerson?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novit? Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, approval of release of executive session minutes, March through September 2015. Is there a motion to approve that? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novit? Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Approval of human resources items, including hiring and leave of absence. Is there a motion to approve that?
Some of, yeah, whatever I'm supposed to say.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the human resources items? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novit? Mrs. Clemmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. The consent agenda tonight contains the approval of disbursement, payroll, and financial statements, October 2015, appointment of IMRF Authorized Agent, minutes of regular meeting, October 27, 2015, minutes of an executive session, October 27, 2015, minutes of a board workshop, October 27, 2015, and disposal of audio recordings, April 22, 2014. Did any board member wish to request any of those items be removed for discussion? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a, well said. Is there a second for the consent agenda? Is there a second for the Consent Agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmison?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you Suzanne for keeping me straight. We moved to FOIA requests. We had one FOIA request this month from Kylie Spawn, a non-resident. Announcements, Monday, November 23 is parent-teacher conferences from 4 till 8:00 p.m. The students have a full day of school. Tuesday, November 24, parent-teacher conferences continue from 8 until 3:30, no student attendance that day. November 25 through 27, Thanksgiving break, no school. Tuesday, December 15 is our next Board of Education meeting, right here at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
By a voice vote, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.